First of all, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to apologize for being running so late. We started the meeting at six o'clock and we had a lot to talk about, so I'm sorry, I apologize. It's just the way this session happened to go, so there you go. Okay, so on the agenda is discussion about signing contracts for the... Is somebody out there talking? Okay, so on the agenda, one item on the agenda is talking about signing contracts for the bidders to construct our firehouse expansion. What we have been talking with our legal counsels and their best suggestion is to talk to the auditors that did our financial audit in 2023 and get their sense of where the monies are that we think we have and just get them on board with that. We have a couple of pointed questions that our legal team is going to ask them. And we tried reaching out to them tonight, but they were not answering the phone. So we're going to try and reconvene at five o'clock here on the 17th. Tonight is the 15th, we're going to try and reconvene on the 17th at five o'clock. Okay, so we are not going to be voting on contracts tonight. We will be doing that potentially on Wednesday, after we have some more detail from our financial auditors. So that is that. Yes, sir.
I was thinking, should one, the meeting be called order and we start with pledge?
We did that already.
Okay. So you're having a meeting on the 17th, which as you know, we have a drill scheduled at the training center. So disenfranchising membership who faces our last meeting here had a lot of concerns and questions that remain to be unanswered and remain to be answered.
Can I, I'll speak to that right now. The reason we're doing it on Wednesday is we're trying to give ourselves a little bit of latitude before the bids expire on Friday. If we, if we do it on Thursday, we have just that much less time to get all our ducks in a row, get the contractors notified, get all the legal things in place. So we're doing our damnedest to get this before the bids expire on the 20th.
So the question raised at the last meeting that we've got the lowest bidder whose bid did not include the build out of the second floor. The second lowest bidder did include the build out of the second floor. So if you had the funding to complete the second floor, roles will be reversed and then the lowest bidder would be the one who has the complete project. The second half of that was the question raised by Ms. Winek that you needed 45 days in a permissive referendum if you had the money available to make it available for the second floor, finishing the second floor. Obviously, there's not 45 days between now and Thursday or between Thursday and the expiration of the bond. So where do we stand with regards to the direction the board is going to be leaning with regards to awarding the bid? And since there's no way you can award it to the second lowest at this point in time, why the charade of waiting till conversation Thursday when that doesn't change anything?
We're going to be meeting on Wednesday, not Thursday. Okay, I take gentle exception to your comment about a charade. I don't think that we have that in our hearts, nor I think in our, our direction that we're traveling. We are trying to, and we have, correct me if I'm wrong, we have found that we have money in various sources, including the, the bond is 15 million, 15.2 million. We need, in hard costs, we need 12 point something million dollars. So we have excess money, but we also have money in our funds, in our accounts.
Can you just clarify, does that 12 million include just the first?
Then I will raise your hand and then I will answer you, thank you. So we will, what we will be doing is going out, signing the contracts eventually, maybe Wednesday if we're lucky. And the monies that we are not, that is not in a bucket today will be in the bucket when we have the permissive referendum approved in 45 days. Presumably, that will allow us to have enough money to cover upstairs and downstairs, full build out. With the exception of the hardware, the, the desks and the chairs and the things like that that we don't necessarily need right up front. So, and this will be going on, we're not... It jumped off, okay. The, the concept is that we don't need that money, we need to encumber it, we need to plan on it having that much money. But at this point, we're at what, 700, 70,000, I forget, what was the number? About 700,000 shy. Using just the, the... I'll throw words, using just the bond money. So we have an excess, but that's going to be also used to pay some of our other costs that are not hard. Hard being metal, steel, concrete, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so the soft costs are the, the legal expenses, the architectural expenses, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, I'm just talking to it.
The concern that I have is this conversation about buckets. And possibly this is something the board could explain. My understanding, and it is not extensive, is that there's basically four buckets. The capital project, the, excuse me, five buckets, the capital projects for the construction, the house, vehicles, which we covered chief's trucks and apparatus, and then our operating checking account, which is swept into an investment account as good due diligence would do. So I'm concerned that this talk about these additional buckets. Now, when I had shared my email with the board recapping last week's conversation, I tried to be very clear that we cannot touch our operating budget for 2024. We cannot touch trucks, we cannot touch effort of vehicles, and we cannot touch house. So there's only so many air quotes buckets that are left that would have funds attached to it. Because my concern, and again, I'm not speaking for the membership, is that we're going to make these plans, yep, we're going to do the second floor, you know what? We're going to take $500,000 from trucks, oh, don't worry, we'll replace it. And that replacement is not going to come because there's overages in the project. There's, oh, we opened up this wall and look what we found. Because personally, from conversations as well as information that the board has shared with me, I don't think we've factored into enough overages considering the field next door, the building that we're tapping into and where this is all going to line up, that we're going to be short of funds and have to get it from somewhere once the project starts. And I'm concerned that's how we lose the second floor. Once again, in addition to potentially losing money for two pieces of apparatus that we need, the chief's truck that we're going to need, plus God forbid, anything that happens at center street or this building during construction process.
So let me answer as best as I remember those questions, as comments, statements. We are not touching the truck, capital reserve truck fund. That's off the table. We probably will be touching the capital reserve building fund. We have more than enough money in that fund to survive pretty much any eventuality that might occur, a capital type expense. I'm just going to pick something, if we were to put on a second story on the parking lot, that's a capital expense. We're not doing things like that, we're, we have nothing like that in the, in the plans. We have a lot of money in that account, swept a lot of on spreadsheets from, from January 1st till now. We have received from the town our taxes, it's public information, it was 1.6 million dollars. So we have swept some of that money into the budgeted buckets like house or trucks or chief's cars, et cetera. We've put money aside for all these buckets that was budgeted in 2023 for the 2024 year. So what we did was we decremented down from the 1.6 plus the money that was already in that general operating fund. And we have come preciously close to what we need in these funds alone. Plus, we have a contingency fund, which is 5%. And our architect in all his 30 years of doing this work has never had to go above about a half of a percent in contingency costs. Could change here, you never know, could very well change here. But we have contingency costs, we, that monies that are available to us out of the bond money. So we are comfortable, our financial lawyer that was just, I just left a few minutes ago, he's pretty comfortable we have the money, I'm not, I don't think I'm putting words in his mouth. He's pretty comfortable we have the money, it's just a matter of how we use it. That's why we have to go back to our, our auditors and ask them for some guidance. So if it was other questions, I want to get to your daughter and another question.
One of the things that you just raised is very concerning. You said that you took the money received from the town, which...
On a spreadsheet, that's all we did, on a spreadsheet.
However, that it dollar for dollar should match what we're budgeting, which is why we try to stay under a 2% cap. So I really do not understand how you can have, we're really close, we've got extra money there. Something was very disingenuous then in the budget process where we budgeted some extra money and we still stayed under the 2% cap. I'm not quite understanding, particularly, you know, the issue I went through where I had budget items of mine slashed and you had to put that money back. So I'm really not too sure how we could have extra money in the funds received from the town to cover the budget.
Part of the answer to that, I believe, and please jump in if I'm saying something inadequate. Well, let me just say something and you, you correct me if I'm wrong. We had money left over from 2022 that was in our budget in 2023. So that followed through into 2024 and the 1.6 million that came to us in 2024 has accumulated into that fund where we have multiple millions of dollars right now. So let me just get to your daughter's question next.
I'm actually, I'll go.
Okay, then you're next, yes.
Two questions, one is you made a comment that you were, you think you're about $700,000 short on the project. Was that inclusive of the second floor?
Yes.
Okay. Second question is what you just spoke about. My recollection under Fire District Finance Law is at the end of every year, any overage that you have, you can do one of two things with it. You can assign it to a capital reserve fund or you can purchase items prior to December 31st and have that billed after and pay that later. It's the only two ways that you can take an overage in a fire district and allocate money. So at the end of 2023, you would have had to take whatever overage it was and say, I'm putting this amount in trucks, this amount in capital reserve buildings and this amount in here. To move them anywhere, you would need to do a permissive referendum. So if you allocated an overage from 2023 into the same floor and you put it in capital reserve trucks, you can't use that for the building unless you now go out to a permissive referendum to shift it from there. I was under the belief through the rumor mill that you had about a million five to start with in some fund somewhere that you're using to pay bond council, that you were paying your architect, that you were paying whatever these costs, your lawyers and so forth, right? That, if that's the overage, then that's a misappropriation of district funds for that purpose. Because at the end of '23, you were supposed to put into a capital reserve fund, not into a slush fund or something into a checking account and just hang out.
No, no, no.
So, and this is going to lead to my overall question is the message that's coming across from you and you're the representative is that you think you have a lot of things, but you can't really tell us where they are and what they're allocated to. And you don't have a sheet, a paper, like a balance sheet that says, I got this here, 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 and these are our expenses and this is blah, 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 and this is our contingency. And that you want to go out and assign $15 million of bid money to somebody and you don't even have documentation to tell you where your money is. It's a lot of, I think, we're close, this person thinks that we might be able to. My opinion is, is that you are in a financial problem because of the past. I'm not going to point fingers at anybody, but there was some stuff that went on in the past and put you into a bad spot. And because this bid process, the bids are going to expire, you're reluctant to stop the project and encumber an additional cost, okay? But the way I see it is, is that you're doing a half, and don't take this the wrong way, you're doing a half-assed job in order to get it done because we don't want the price to go up. In my, my opinion, I would much rather you see, stop the project, get your stuff in a row, look the public in the eye and say, hey, over the last 15 years, 20 years of this project, we made some mistakes. We want to fix them and we want to do it the appropriate way. Not shoehorn this in to say, I got a deadline of July 20th and if I do it, the bids are going to expire. We've wasted, and I hate to say it, as a chief here for over 20 years, we've wasted hundreds of thousands of dollars on stupid things like plates and, and other crazy things. And we're worried about taking a little bit of a hit so that we can do a project correctly. So my recommendation, in my opinion, and I know some people share it with me, is that let's stop and not be shoehorned into something and jam something in so that we can't have a meeting with representation because we got to get it done. I don't think that's fair to the project, I think that if we're starting off doing 70%, we're going to end up getting 70%. We should be 100% across the board and everybody should be on the page. You should be able to look at a piece of paper and say, yes, sir, I have this money and this is exactly where these funds are and this is how we're going to do it. And you haven't said that yet.
Sure.
Okay, Russell, I appreciate everything you said. Paul, everyone here, thank you for your time coming. I am speaking for myself, I came on this board January of this year. I have been trying to ask, and I'm not, you know, saying anything detrimental personally, but I've been asking the project committee, Ed Frank and Dwight, to please tell me where we stand with regard to this budget. Financially, it did not make sense to me. I have been asking about equipment because I know we don't, that's not included in the project, it's on the district to pay for it. It is a substantial amount of money. $285,000 is not going to outfit the entire first and second floor of the new bill, okay? I have been trying to get a handle on what money we have, myself personally. There is no, and I've said this numerous times, there's no information in that office. So manually, I have to try to find where we stand. There's no reports up on the district site after February. Right now, I can tell you the district has in a checking account over $3 million. I've asked repeatedly, why, okay? Upon math myself, and remember, we got 1.6 million for 2024 fiscal year budget. Last year, it was 1.4 million. Why do we have 1.2 million dollars sitting in a checking account? I cannot believe that fiscal year 2023, this district only spent $100,000. It mathematically doesn't make sense. You're 100% correct. At the end of a fiscal year for a fire district, the money must either be swept by a motion into a capital reserve account, which obviously it hadn't been done, or you keep a specified amount available for whatever bills you have attributable to that fiscal year. We should not have 1.2 million in that checking account, period, sitting there. Not earmarked, not used for anything, it should have been moved, you know, the past is the past. But sitting here as a board, we are fiscally and financially responsible to the taxpayers. That money should not be there. So it will be moved and it should be moved ASAP by a motion into the capital reserve accounts. Then if the district feels it necessary to help with the project by a permissive referendum, we do that, if it passes after 45 days, that money is available to be used. We discussed this at length tonight. And then again, that was my finding. Charlie Rousch also found that that was the same amount sitting in the checking account, operating checking account, and it should not be there, period. I don't know how long this money has accumulated over one year, two years, I don't know. But if you have money sitting there, why are we asking the taxpayers for an additional $1.6 million? It's not right, it's not the way it should be. So I share in your concerns and I really think if we cannot get our accounts in order, we shouldn't be building a building if we don't know how much money we actually have. That's my feeling, but after listening to what's going on tonight, I'm really reluctant to vote on this project going forward. And it's upsetting. The other thing, Paul, is I want the members to be here. What time are you leaving for your training?
Usually we leave here about 20 to seven.
Is five o'clock not doable?
We try, I mean, people coming home from work trying to sweep the day.
Because you should have always been involved in the project.
One question, just to, you were talking about, you know, that they, any excess funds from last year and sweeping, et cetera. Do we have a handle on what bills are outstanding from last year? Like I know, for instance, Mike, if we paid $50,000 to AAA for turnout gear yet, that was, that, that, no, because they weren't going to bill us and we received it. We only received it about a month ago and usually you ask if we got the bill.
That wasn't $50,000.
Oh, seven sets of gear, so 35, 36,000, something like that, so that hasn't been paid and covered. By doing, but do we know if there's anything else that was ordered at the end of last year that hadn't been received or hadn't been billed yet?
When we get bills, we're doing our very best to pay them.
Probably should table that part of the conversation, just...
We're doing our very best when we get a bill.
I understand you're doing your best, but I'm not, I'm not talking about our best, I'm talking about facts and figures. Do we know?
If we don't, we don't get a bill, we don't know that we have to pay it. Show me a bill, we'll pay it.
But we should know what's outstanding. It's not true, because you submit a purchase order and that should identify to you that that's out.
When the purchase order, when the invoice comes in, we pay it. You know, I mean, what am I supposed to do? What are any of us supposed to do if we don't have information saying we owe somebody?
That's not information because you didn't get it. It's information that you didn't do your job and go ask for it that said, I got submitted, I got submitted a purchase order to buy this. Hey AAA, where is my bill? If we're on top of our accounting and I submitted a purchase order for $36,000 and nobody's billed me for it, whether it's you personally, whether it's a treasurer, which I know you're having an issue with, somebody on the board has to take that upon themselves and say, holy crap, we ordered $36,000 worth of equipment, I never saw a bill. Hey chief, did we get that gear yet? Is it due? It's not you sitting back in a chair and, and let me finish. Sitting in a chair, having a meeting once a month and doing very little in between to run the business, because you can't run a business for an hour or two a month at a meeting. Somebody should be on top of that to do that. So that, to me, is a little bit offensive that how are we supposed to know, right? There are people in this department who are finance people. There are people in this department who are construction people. There are people in here that are HR management people. There are people that have all types of talents and not once does this board come out to anybody and say, hey, can we knock on your door for a minute and ask you a couple of questions? Help us out with this? I don't think any of you have that expertise in terms of many of the roles that you play because you don't do that in the real world, but you have plenty of people that can help you do it. And then the last thing I want to say is, and again, not to besmirch anybody, but my perception is, is that the professionals that you're relying on to give you advice on this project all have a financial stake in this project. They all have something to gain with this going forward, okay? The membership or the people that are going to be here for the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years for this project should be the ones giving you the advice on how to go forward, okay? We have members in this department who have cancer and statistics say that we have members that will get cancer, okay? And we're trying to make sure that this project is done in a way that minimizes those potentials to the best of our ability. And for the most part, as a board, you have completely shut us out, have not sought us out for any of the information, okay? And now you're making up, well, we think we might, we got to talk to this person. But all the professionals that you're talking to have a stake in the game financially. We are the ones that are doing the work that this district is in business for, okay? We're the ones that need the protection, we're the ones that need the funds, okay? We come, we should come before everybody else. We should come before the public though. Because if we can't do our job, then there's nobody here to go take care of the job that they do. So it is disappointing at a minimum that you haven't done the work to get this product. This is 20 years in the making. In 2021, I gave you a document at the departmental meeting the other day of a fully fitted out building with everything included, second floor done at, at a number. And it listed everything out, that was two weeks ago. I would have liked to see that document turned back in and say, okay, well, this is the number as it is now and we either have it or we don't, not make believe buckets of money that you alluded to. And it's, it's, it's almost insulting to the membership that we're in a position that we have to come to these meetings and fight for something that we deserve and you don't have an answer for us. And what is this, the third or fourth meeting as it relates to this in a very short period of time? And you didn't have it on day one, you didn't have the information and you certainly don't have it today. And you are almost ready to go sign paperwork or you alluded to that on Wednesday, you're going to potentially sign. I don't know how, if I ran a business like that, how I would be able to remain in business. It's unconscionable, I, I just don't know what to say.
Paul, did you have a comment?
Well, my concern is, the reason I asked my question was, if we hadn't paid for the turnout gear that we ordered last year, they only just took delivery of, and if there were other items, unknown to me because as you know, I've been very vocal about getting the run rate of my budget versus my expenses. So I can't even tell you whether something was charged for or not. If you sweep funds into a capital account that you were just discussing doing, can you bring that money back to pay a bill if all of a sudden you realize, oh, that turnout gear wasn't paid for? Because I don't want last year's turnout gear that was budgeted for, for fiscal year 2023 to be charged against my 2024 budget because I need to purchase turnout gear for 2024. And my concern is that if that money is swept away, it's not going to be able to come back, pay for any bills that might be outstanding for equipment items, et cetera, that were ordered and hadn't been billed or come back in. Your comment about, well, we, you know, we don't get a bill, we can't pay it. Obviously, that's true, but we also, I think, need to acknowledge the fact that over the last four months, there's been a lot of problems with bills that we either submitted or didn't get or, you know, there's a reason you had a number of bills that came in for second or third requests. So my concern is that there's more to it than that and we're going to be blocking ourselves out and all of a sudden we're going to have to, of the funds, if we move them into an account that we can't bring them back.
We did not move any funds from any turnout gear, chief's cars. We didn't move any funds away, we didn't move any money out of the capital reserve trucks.
No, I was just talking about Nancy saying we've got the $3 million in the checking account, that money needs to be moved into the reserves.
No, so I'll answer that question. So the leftover funds from 2023, okay? Any extra above and beyond what isn't, let's say earmarked for expenses such as the turnout gear, you know, whatever else you may have outstanding or any of the commissioners may have purchased prior to December 31st of 2023, that money would have to stay in the checking account. It wouldn't be swept.
Do we have any idea if there is anything outstanding?
I personally don't know, but you know, that before any of that money is taken, definitely people would have to, I don't know, it's funny. Definitely people would have to make sure that anything that they had ordered or anything outstanding, that money is kept there, okay? Before the rest of the money is moved, okay? So that would not be moved, it would be there for, you know, use of paying the bill.
So any other commissioners have any comments? Okay. So as it stands, and thank you all for your comments, I appreciate your coming. I appreciate your, your being here and asking questions. As it stands, in the last six months, we've paid pushing half a million dollars in legal and professional fund expenses. So we have been using money out of our operating fund and our capital reserve. It's a capital, it's called capital, right? It's kind of a weird name, it's called capital. We've been using money out of that account for those expenses. And we were initially, some year and a half, two years ago, we were told that some of this money that we were getting from the bond would allow us to reimburse ourselves for, you know, some of these accounts that we're using. We at this point are not planning on doing that. We're planning on just using the bond money for the building, for the first and second floor. That's what our goal is tonight. That's what we want to do is we want to build out the two floors as completely as possible. And I think the chief mentioned a couple of days ago that there's things that are in the plan that we don't need to buy for the, for the first floor or the second floor, like cabinets for flammable rags and chemicals and liquids. We don't need to buy them right now, we can buy them down the road. There's desks or things like that upstairs, we don't need to buy right now, chairs, we don't need to buy them right now. Down the road, when the, when the walls are up and the floors are up and everything is nice, nice, then we can consider buying them when we have more money. We have, we're a hair's breadth away from being able to afford this as the building stands now in the drawings. We just need to allow or get permission from the lawyers and the accountants. You want to raise your hand, okay? We just want to get guidance from the financial people, lawyers and so on, that we're doing it the right way. The option always remains that we have a building downtown we consult. The option always remains that we have a building downtown we can sell. And that's always been part of the plan to sell that building, either pay down some of our debt or use it to outfit some of the expenses for the first, the first and second floor, which we're, we probably don't need for that. We can probably push off the sale of that building until after the expansion is completed. So we're, we're financially, we're, we're looking okay. Um, it's just a matter of how we do it. We just want to make sure we do it the right way. And the architect and the engineering team that have been building buildings for thirty years, I think we can, we can count on them to have the best interests of the department at hand. And I don't think that they are trying to sell us anything that is exorbitant or something we don't need. Um, they actually went through when the bids initially came in and they cut some stuff. And they, they made some good choices. I think we're, uh, we're on a better track now than we were then before the bids opened. So, um, anyway, I don't want to belabor this. I want to just say that we're not going to be signing contracts tonight. Uh, there's a, a better chance that we'll do, we'll do it on Wednesday. And if I can confer with the people that were on the call a few minutes ago, pardon me. If they're willing to move it to Thursday night, would that work better for the department?
No.
No. Okay. So.
Somebody else just answered whether or not it'd be good for the department.
So Bob, is that, is that not convenient for you?
I'm not, I'm not available Thursday night. I am available Wednesday night.
Okay. So I'm not sure we would need you on Thursday. It would be great to have you. Maybe we'll stay with the Wednesday night. We'll have to see. We'll, we'll keep you in the loop.
Well, it's better for the members.
Again, we've got a drill at the training center on Wednesday night. You know, to be honest, there's a lot of fire in this heat to have people come in here, be aggravated before we leave. But look, at the end of the day, you're not going to be able to sign a contract that includes a second floor on Wednesday.
That's not entirely accurate, but go ahead with your comment.
Well, if you need to move funds via permissive referendum, do you not need to be five days?
Bob, you have a comment?
Yeah, I think, I think the, the two lawyers have been discussing it and they can, in fact, they need confirmation from somebody tomorrow, not tomorrow, who did the audit. But it was the, um, the, both lawyers felt very much clear that they, you guys will be able to sign the contract Wednesday night. Because the, you have the fifteen million coming and the construction cost is fourteen million to do both. So you mean the contract values, you can sign the contract values because you will have that much money in hand. And then the permissive referendum will be used for the soft costs and the reimbursement of previously expended money and things like that.
So we could end up with a building with no equipment?
No, 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 no. You know, the, I, so let me say something. You, you guys know me. Ross, you know me. I have been doing fire stations for thirty years. You made a comment about no attention to the safety of the firefighters. I lecture nationally at Firehouse, at Fiero, at FTSOA on exactly that topic. So the commissioners didn't hire some bozo who doesn't know what they're doing. This from day one has been a process directed at making a safe fire station for all of the members. I mean, if you pick up, pick up last month's Firehouse magazine, you'll see a feature article, the May issue by me on how to design a proper decon laundry. So.
We're not challenging your design.
What we're challenging is the board's management of this overall process and where we stand with being able to definitively say, we've got X available to finish the project.
The meeting that you just, the closed session meeting with the attorneys was directed exactly at that.
I understand, but we're at the eleventh hour when that meeting was held for clarity to be understood. We've had three meetings in the last three weeks where we've been pressed for this information and yet at the eleventh hour, we're having a conversation, oh, and we're gonna put it off till Wednesday because we need to get some more answers. But my, the, no, hang on, let me finish. The fact that you're answering the question with regards to where we stand with moving money via the permissive referendum and not the board is even more concerning to me. My board members should have that answer at their fingertips and not defer to you who builds fantastic firehouses and safe firehouses. But I've got board members who should have this information at their fingertips and be able to repeat it the way that you did. And that's our big concern. Once we get this signed and we're moving forward and we've got issues that come up and issues arise, I think I speak for the majority of people here now, we've got concerns how well that's going to be managed and how well it's going to be handled.
Well, you have a, you have a construction manager, Triton, and you have an architect who's done many of these buildings. And the, uh, the, you know, as you heard, our buildings have very low change orders. The, that, by the way, that less than half percent isn't for thirty years, but the last six years, we have not had one go more than a half percent in change orders. And that includes renovation addition projects. So there is, there, there should be confidence. And, and I understand everything you're saying that, but.
Please let him just finish. Please. Let's have some decor on there. Please. Go ahead, Bob.
So, you know, the, the, the contract documents are very thorough. There's, there's very little wiggle room for contractors. We are used to standing on behalf of the owner and mostly without the benefit of a construction manager like Triton. So there's two bodies here to protect you, to get the building that you're intending at the price that's been agreed, that well, will be agreed to when the contracts are signed. And so the, the permissive referendum is going to be addressed at soft costs that are beyond the amount of the contract value. You know, the, the, the contract value, let's just say eighty-five percent of the cost of the whole thing is the brick and mortar contract value and fifteen is soft cost. That's not a real number, but it's sort of in that range. It's, it's the soft cost that'll be covered by moving the money from the reserve into the budget. So, so you, you, you need to know that the brick and mortar amount is covered. What they're looking for from the auditor is to get absolute insurance that what they're doing with the contract is proper in terms of getting phase two in, in the initial signing of the contract rather than having to bid it out later. So that's all.
So Bob.
Bob, you can go ahead.
Bob, just, it's Russell again. Like you, I have forty-two years in the fire service. I'm a state and county fire instructor. I'm a nationally certified life safety, public and life safety educator. And I've been authorized by the state of New York to keep the cancer prevention program throughout the state of New York. So I know a lot about the cancer prevention stuff and I also know the backend of it. You build it. I know what happens to it afterwards, right? But if you're telling me that you're gonna build a building, but you're not gonna have the money right away for an exhaust system or a gear extractor or the shower curtain for the shower and the soap for the shower and lockers to put stuff in so people can actually get decon properly. That's all nice and good, but that looks good on your plan, but that doesn't work in, in the, in the real world, right?
So that, that is not, let me answer that part. That is in the soft cost budget. The two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Don't have the money for it right now.
Excuse me. The two hundred, the two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars covers all of that Firematic equipment and the shower curtains and all of that stuff. And what was been, has been said explicitly here several times is that money can be reserved, you know, moved from the building reserve. Remember, the brick and mortar portion of this is covered by the bond. So, and there's still some residual after that. There's, I can't remember exactly, six or eight hundred thousand dollars in addition to the brick and mortar cost within the bond. So the, the, the two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars doesn't even use up all the six hundred thousand dollars. The, the soft cost will be covered by the money being, that will be moved from the capital reserve and other places that they have money. And, and that will be that. You will not, in fact, end up in the building without a shower curtain.
Okay. So I will leave that there. So the last thing that you said was is that you're gonna have a project manager and, and, and all that yet. I actually have a picture sitting here in my iPhone of a project you did here in Westchester where a countertop got installed directly over an electrical outlet. Okay? Small potatoes, but there was a project manager there and it was your project. So if that's something that got through, my question is, what didn't get caught? So I don't take the argument that, oh, everything's gonna be great because we got Triton and we got a project manager and they're gonna be there every day because I get to go into the places that you designed and other people designed and find out all kinds of crazy stuff. And as a matter of fact, today, we just Googled the low bidder. And the low bidder does not happen to be a Better Business Bureau accredited builder. And on top of it, there's a complaint against them levied with the Better Business Bureau. So we're starting off with a contractor that's not accredited by the Better Business Bureau. That should speak volumes, right? Then on top of it, there's a complaint against them. Okay? And everything's hunky dory and everything's gonna work in fantasy world. I don't buy it, right? I'm a fire inspector and a building inspector. I do this stuff every day. I go into buildings. Project managers ain't gonna catch everything. So if we start off with schlock, we're gonna end up with schlock. No matter what you do, we're gonna be unhappy with the project.
Yeah.
We're paying fifty million dollars that we should be a hundred percent, not seventy percent, a hundred percent. We deserve it. The public deserves it. So don't throw things out there that, oh, we're gonna have somebody here that's gonna, and everything's gonna be hunky dory. I don't buy it. And that contractor, from what I can see, should not be the one that gets the bid.
Well, the law in New York State doesn't allow you to reject the contractor by those terms. You're required to take the lowest responsible bidder and the, wait, Russell. Arguing the term responsibility is extremely difficult in New York State.
So let's try, let's get a, let's get a better person in there to build the building. We'll worry about the backend after.
Okay, Russell.
Paul, go ahead.
Last week, we were discussing that there was going to be potentially money freed up when the district reimbursed itself for the expenses that you've already incurred once the bond money became available. So an acknowledgement, yes, no, maybe I'm crazy?
I'm, I'm going to smile at that because that's not what we've decided as of.
That was what was said.
Yeah, last week, but we're not doing that now, but go ahead.
My question is going to be, do you need to, are you required to reimburse money that you've already spent? Before you can, before you can unencumber it or if you spend money pre-project, that you can either write that off as, yep, we already spent it, it's gone and all of the money, you don't have to reimburse yourself? Or are you required to reimburse yourself for money spent pre-bond availability?
Charlie, jump in if I'm making a mistake here, but I don't believe we have to have a requirement to reimburse ourselves. What we have done is we've moved last year, August, I think it was the twenty-third. We moved one, we had the bond resolution. No, we had a permissive resolution. Referendum, there we go. Uh, to allow us to move up to one point five million. At this point, we've moved unused.
One point, one five.
One point one five. We, we haven't used it all, but we moved one point one five.
So it was in buildings.
Yeah.
And the referendum allowed us to move that into, um, well, it is listed as capital, but let's call it professional services. Where we've, you know, typically signed checks for law and architects and things like that. And we still have three hundred and fifty thousand that we could use out of that to, to satisfy the referendum.
Keeping the numbers at a million five just to make it easier. So you're not required to reimburse the district a million five so that you're actually working with a bond of thirteen point five. But Matt is asking for clarification. So you can actually, the money that you move for professional services, it's not to be, need to be reimbursed to the district from the bond money. You can just, again, I don't want to say write that off, but yep, it's an expense being incurred. The money's gone. We're fine. Fifteen million in the bond is fifteen available for the, for the physical um, hard costs of construction and potentially any soft costs that it would still cover.
Yes. And I had, I have the referendum right here. Um, I had Lynn read it earlier. And it really only dictates where the money is coming from, not where the money goes to.
No, I just wanted to make sure.
If we have a deficit.
Yourself before you can spend any further money.
Yeah. One, one other, one other point to keep in mind. There were three lawyers in the meeting a half an hour ago. A bond attorney, your fired district attorney, and I don't even know what the third attorney's area is. They all are knowledgeable about this stuff and they all agreed to what can and can't be done. With the one exception of the one question that they want to take up with the auditor tomorrow. So the, the commissioners are not working blind.
Okay. John, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. John, Barry, go ahead.
I just have a quick question. As we're sitting outside for an hour, you guys went executive session to discuss finances. Pretty much, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
What parameters is executive session allowed for discussing finances? And why wasn't the public invited? So we know what's going on when you're discussing these issues with the lawyers, with Lynn and everybody else. We were shut outside there for an hour. People had a lot of questions and maybe we would like to know some of the answers to what was going on. I don't know if the parameters of an executive session cover that aspect, but I'll follow up and find out.
Please. Uh, if we were in the wrong by doing that, then we will.
I will just add to that, as a commissioner sitting on the board, I don't have access to those figures either. I've been asking since February, okay? And I join all of you with the concerns. I'm concerned myself. I don't have access to those financials. Um, I was hoping to have them today. Um, Commissioner Roush, again, has been working on it all weekend. Um, and again, it's, it's something that every fire commissioner should have available to them and when they sit down on a given day. And I agree with your concerns and I will do my best to try to, to change it because it should not be this way.
Those questions have been asked for months, going back to when it was snowing. And I'll be honest with you, this has given the impression to me, and I'm sure other members, that this is a big cover up. You don't want the finance issues coming out. You go to an executive session with lawyers. Why not have everybody here to see what's going on? Why not be public? I mean, you, you're responsible for acting a professional, you're competent, responsible and transparent manner. Matter. And this hasn't happened. And I think it's disgrace. And this has been going on for months. You don't answer emails. You don't answer questions. We don't even know what's going on. If you're having discussions about finances, we should be a part of that. I'm sure everybody else in the room would like to hear what was going on. Instead, we're being shut out. And it, it gets given the appearance of a major cover up for a fifteen point two million dollar project.
Thank you. John, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure I got this straight. Now, my understanding is you're waiting to hear back from council whether you can use the, I'll say the second highest bidders that have the second floor.
Will be your nice.
Second lowest. The second lowest that had the second floor. Last week, they said that we couldn't.
If, if we, the, the idea is that we have to find a competent bidder, which we have. These are, these bidders have all been vetted by, uh, our project manager and they, we had a phone call that we were able to listen in and ask questions. And, um, if we found something that disqualified them, they would have been disqualified. But none of the bidders had anything other than pricing that was disqualifying them. They all answered the appropriate, go ahead. You want to ask? Okay.
But so last week, we discussed phase one and phase two.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
And then last week, I believe council said that if we're in phase two, we'd have to go back out and rebid. Because we brought up using the second lowest bidder because they bid both phases of the project. So now it's changing. Still waiting to hear if that's possible. So if it is possible, then the second lowest bidder is not among the issues would be the one that's used.
If, if I may, well, what ended up happening was if we went beyond the twentieth of July, we would have to rebid the second floor.
Yeah.
That's why there was a push to see if that forty-five day permissive referendum was needed or not because if it wasn't a forty-five day period and they could shift gears prior to the twentieth of July, they would be able to award the bid to the bidder who included the second floor in his bid, which was the second one, which would then become the lowest. Which is what they're supposed to be sharing on Wednesday. Or that's what they're, they're researching.
You know, one second, Barry. I'm finishing with John. John, did the chief answer your question to your satisfaction? Or you have more that you'd like to ask?
No, so I'm just, so the potential is potentially. We would be then going with a different contractor.
The second lowest bidder, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
It's potential, but at this point, the architect, I'm sorry, not the architect. The project manager has worked, no, it was the architect. He has worked very well. He has good, um, outcome. From the masonry job that is potentially going to be done by this general contractor. He has had good outcomes with that. So he has, uh, kind of, uh. Said that he likes them. Uh, now he doesn't know, let me just finish. He doesn't have, um, as much confidence maybe in the other GC's masonry guy. So that's one thing that's kind of leading us toward the low bidder. Now, if we go for the low bidder and do the second floor. It becomes not the low bidder. The second lowest bidder right now, if we hired him from the beginning and asked him to do the first and second floor. He is then the low bidder because to do both, to do both phases, okay? The second lowest bidder currently would do both phases at a lower price, slightly lower, in the tens of thousands, something like that. Okay, fine.
Are you, you guys have the same meaning I go to?
Let me just finish with Kaylee. Kaylee, go ahead.
Um, I'm sorry, this is just a little bit more of my own understanding. So per Dad's question regarding the reimbursement. You mentioned earlier in this meeting that the board will not be reimbursed.
We're not planning on it at this point, correct?
Is there any financial repercussions that can come up for the district or the fire if we don't reimburse that money to the fund?
It's money that we are spending towards the build out of first and second floor. The money that we took from. I'm forgetting the numbers also. Where did we take the one point five from?
Uh, buildings.
Was it buildings? We've moved it from buildings to, uh, the capital expenses. So. Right now, we have in excess of a million and a half, a million point two or something like that in, in buildings. Almost to one point two million in buildings. So that's for a capital project. So we don't anticipate capital type projects like a second story garage out in the back, you know, I think a capital expenses. That's not what we're planning on doing. Uh, I'll get to you in a moment, Charlie. Thank you. Um, so we feel that we have, um, we feel that we have enough money in our coffers. Plus with the, uh, the, uh, the numbers that Bob was telling us a little while ago. That we will probably be, uh, not needing to do anything except go to the permissive referendum and ask for the permission of the public. To use our own money in our, in our accounts for the build out of this second floor and finish out the first floor as well. So. We're not going to have to use as much, I don't believe, as we were initially thinking. We were thinking initially we would be using something, I know it was two million or close to it. Now it doesn't seem like we're going to have to use that much money from the bond issue issuance and the money that we have on hand. Uh, Barry, you're next.
Remind myself again.
Yes, sir.
The issues with NERZIA, if I'm, that's right. Didn't come from the public, it didn't come from the chiefs, and it didn't come from the board of firefighters. It came from the team. And again, we discussed this last time we had a meeting over there. There was serious criticism that were not considered by the team as a preferred contractor. So that's my concern. If there was issues over there, I think we can justify not dealing with them. We're going up to key construction and dealing with them. I think there's enough question marks. And, and the, the issue that they could come out and sue us, we could be sued for almost everything. As a matter of, I'm surprised we haven't been sued so far for this, this construction going on. So we have to do what's in the best interest of the district and the best interest of the firefighters. Again, without the firefighters, Dwight, there is no firepower.
Agreed.
There is no.
Agreed.
No. You know, and we need to do that. I don't think.
I would just say something.
Hang on one second. Hope your husband finished.
He's always talking. So, so this, this is what I have to say, just based upon my experience here. And the, uh, comments from the firemen here. It may really be prudent to put this on hold, okay, till the district knows we have the money to proceed. We do not know that we can finish the second floor as of today, okay? I don't know, uh, how we can go about a project when we don't know if we can afford it. So for, uh, another hundred thousand dollars to delay this and maybe go out to bidding. Uh, let me, let me finish. We may come out on the winning end, we may come out on the losing end. But to rush, and I agree with what you are all saying, to rush this through right now and the commissioners sitting here. Don't have an idea of how much money we have.
That's untrue.
Well, I, I disagree with you, Dwight. How much money do we have?
We have, based upon this statement from Friday.
No, to, for the project, to pay for the, put toward the project.
We have, do you have a spreadsheet in?
Okay, so we don't know right now how much money we have, okay? I think we really need to sit down and have a firm. Educated understanding of what we have going into a project. So to Kaylee's point, we don't have to exhaust money that's in a, a capital reserve, not trucks, not vehicles. Uh, buildings, because if we exhaust that account and the roof leaks in this building, we have nothing to go back to. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but, uh, again, I'm uncomfortable sitting here. Looking at all of you and not being able to say we can afford the first, I think we can afford the build out of the first floor of that, that project. But I can say honestly, we can afford the second floor. You all deserve the second floor, okay? Fully fitted out. Russell, to your point, the cancer issue is a priority. And thank you, you have helped with, with a grant. Uh, Russell helped write a grant along with myself for, uh, washer extractors for that, gear dryers. Um, without his help, we wouldn't have been able to do that. Uh, the chief. Again, with a grant, I wrote another grant to try to get, uh, money for the funding, uh, for a million dollars for construction. I don't know why these grants were not applied for before, but again, that's in the past. Do it now. Um, uh.
Is it the Harkam one?
I applied for that one actually over the weekend. I applied for another one, okay, for a washer, dryer, for, for gear. Um, but again, everyone has to pitch in here. Uh. And I really feel bad looking at all you guys that go out every day and fight these fires for us, exposed to these carcinogens. You deserve the best. You deserve a two-story, fully built firehouse. Um, and okay, I'll get off the grandstand for now, but I don't understand where our money is. I cannot honestly sit here and give you an educated, uh, answer because I don't know where it is.
I think everybody understands that.
Barry, let me hold you up for one second. Paul, you had a comment.
Just have two final things. If we're, and I do agree. We spoke about this last week, putting a pause. Rebidding the project, if you have the funds available for the second floor. You're still going to have the funds available for the second floor on the twenty-first of July. So why not rebid the project to include the second floor? This way, I know Kevin had raised some concerns about, well, we, the date expires, you're going to have contractors wondering, is this a real project? Who really made it or not? Here you're being handed rationale to go to the bidders and say, guys. We're expanding the project, worth more money to you now. We'd like you to bid on completing the second floor. The second part they would like to raise is that, while I appreciate Mr. Mitchell likes this particular mason. I also share Barry's concerns because we were at the same meeting. Where Kevin commented, and I'm not making this up, I know you seem to not sure that I have this correct recollection. The lowest bidder was not the preferred bidder to work with. And now we've come up with all different rationales, why, well, he's really not bad, you know, we just got to watch him real close and stuff like that. But yet now we're kind of back to that same thing because, well, Mr. Mitchell likes this particular mason. Is the mason that the lowest bidder. Uh, I'm sorry, that the next lowest bidder, are there deficiencies with that particular mason that would preclude us from doing business with that mason? Because my rationale is. If you're willing to use that same rationale that there's things you're willing to overlook with the lowest bidder. Then why wouldn't that be the same with subcontractors of the second lowest bidder?
So the thing that Kevin said. About the lowest bidder is that you sometimes have to keep an eye on him. Because he might take shortcuts or he might add, try to add, uh, a change order or something like that. But that's the whole point of Kevin, Kevin and his assistant will be onsite and Bob has an assistant that will be onsite every day that the project is on.
We won't be there every day.
Uh, my mistake. Okay, so it's Kevin's, Kevin's man.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm here on the call and, you know, for the team and everybody, I hope you can hear me. All of the contractors were properly vetted. They all went through a scope, what we call a scope review, where we break the project down and ask them a series of questions to make sure. They've covered it, all of the, uh, bo- the permitting requirements, all the requirements of the town. All the requirements of the contract documents to make sure that. Um, they purchased in their bid, everything that you've asked for that's been designed. And then our job is to be onsite full time, not, not Wendell, but Triton. Representing the, 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 the district because, you know, we're, we, we do construction, professional building. And, uh, we understand the process. And we're going to make sure that those, all those contractors coordinate with each other. And provide all of the, uh, labor materials that were in the bid documents, okay? So. We checked their, their, uh, bank accounts, we checked their, um, uh, EMR ratings, their safety ratings. We went through and did OSHA checks. We did pull up something, uh, a complaint that they had on a residential, I'm talking specifically about NERZIA. Uh, we did pull up a complaint on a residential project, which I believe was some on cabinetry work or something that they did. Which was very, was not relevant for the type of work that we are doing here. Um, and we didn't see that as being a large enough issue for us to be able to make a stand. Uh, under the guidelines of the state, you have to follow the municipal law. You have to find a contractor to be, uh, not a, a viable contractor by finding. Major issues and major issues would be things like, uh, being terminated and having bonding companies come in for various reasons. Or, um, leaving, walking off the job or, uh, subcontractors that failed to complete their work. Which caused other lawsuits and liens and things of that nature. We could, we could put together a really good defense, uh, uh, to argue. Contractors not being accredited to be able to do the job. We did not feel that we found enough information on NERZIA. Or, for that matter, key. To be able to disqualify either one of those from, from their bid. Um, and so if, if the, if the commute, if the, the, the group and the board feels that it's important. To not go with the lowest bidder, uh, for, for those reasons that you have found, okay? You, and I, listen, all I can do is give you the pros and the cons of that decision-making process. It would not be one that I would suggest. Because on the back end, you will probably be delaying your construction. That means that you'll probably get claims from your other prime contractors because remember you're fighting one GC if you go to court. Uh, and not the other ones that you have contracts with. Uh, and then if you, again, we've had this conversation about costs as time goes by. So I'm trying to balance the time and the costs and the effort that's been put in. To try and make a, a project for you happen. I, I agree that a project can happen. Um, I believe that the funding is there for you to realize your base project. I also agree that right now, based on conversations that are being had, that there's got to be some. Review of the financing that the, and final agreement with the, um, uh, other bond agents and auditors. To just, just confirm once and for all that in fact, the funding that they, that is available can be used. In a safe and legal way for, for your commissioners to be able to say. Yes, it's okay to move forward with the second floor. So I, I, walking out of this meeting, I don't want to think, I don't, I don't want people to think that. There's no possibility for a project to happen. There is. Um, however, would not, right now, I think the question is that whether or not you can afford that second floor. I think the, based on conversations I'm hearing. That the lawyers are indicating that there, that the funds should be there. It has to be properly tabulated and allocated. And as long as that's done, then we're hoping that we can realize a whole project. I really do, and I know everybody's talking about the eleventh hour and you're absolutely right. It is very late. I'm on vacation. I'm, I'm sitting in my hotel room. I just missed dinner with my family for this meeting. Um, so to tell, to say that I'm not trying to put an effort in is, 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 is disconcerting to me. Um, I would like to see this project go. And if it doesn't, there is no financial thing that I benefit from if it does or it doesn't go. I'm just hoping that the project does go for the, at the end of the day. Because I, I, I would love to see this happen for your, for you guys, for the membership. I hope that, I hope that that happens for you. I really do. Um, waiting too long may cause bigger problems that you can't dig yourself out of. That's my concern.
I'd like to add a point to that, you know? You, you've got winter coming. You ought to sign these contracts and let these guys get out of the ground before winter hits. I mean, if you go out back out to bid. You know, you've got to give them at least a month to do the bidding and all that kind of stuff. The prices are going to go up. They're going to charge more because they're going to see more winter conditions in front of them. That, you know, the, it's, I think, I think it's going to be many hundreds of thousands of dollars that the price of the building will go up. And I, I don't, don't want to try and guess at it, but I think it would be a huge mistake to miss. What's left of this construction season. Because then you may end up. You're also going to alienate the bidders and some of them won't go and say, eh, forget it, I'm not going to bid these people, they're nuts. And you're going to find yourself maybe not breaking ground till next spring. And then you're talking about a half a year of escalation. At current rates of about six percent per annum. So you're talking about three percent on, on twelve million? So that's another, almost a half a million dollars. I, I just.
With the possibility of having contractors that we don't know that may be. Worse than what we are looking at now.
Yeah.
Don, you had a question?
The, uh, were all the commissioners involved in interviewing the bidders once their bids opened? And, uh, you know, the, the process of vetting came through?
So we, we discussed this at one meeting in the past. I don't remember which one. Um, it was my understanding and I've, I've told people that I was going to ask the lawyer, but he, he's not here now. Uh, I actually left him a voice message. Um, it was my understanding that, uh, this was a type of meeting that we would have to notice it. We didn't notice it. So I, when I heard Ed jump in and ask a question on one of these calls, I backed out. And it turned out that I think Nancy and, and Charlie were on the call at the same time. So my misunderstanding possibly, and I'm, I'm saying this right out in front. I may have been wrong and that this could have been noticed very easily. And, um, this may or may not needed it to have been noted, noticed. So I, I'm not sure. I got to talk to the lawyer and find out. So I'm hoping I'm answering your question.
A little late to.
Yes, it is. And two weeks ago when we discussed this, it was too.
Right, but that was before you had an executive session tonight to discuss budget, which is not part of the public meeting law, something that can be held behind closed doors. The other side of the coin, you have a conversation involving bids and contracts, which could be covered under public, uh, meeting laws. And you don't have an executive session, so all five of you were not on the same page, getting the same responses, the same interactions with the bidders. As. The project was moving forward. So I mean, there's.
Chief, that, that chief, in my experience in doing this with the, with firehouses and other public entities. Um, the commissioners or, uh, administrators, um, uh, districts. Uh, they're not required to be on these scope meetings. We, we encourage it so that they can kind of understand the process. So they can, when asked, they can talk about it and.
Kevin, that's my point exactly. And I apologize for interrupting. That's the point I've been trying to.
But they were, they were commissioners that were on these meetings.
A board and the board not having this information at their fingertips and being able to respond to us. They should be the ones who are ultimately responsible to answer these questions and have a conversation. Whether it's about a permissive referendum, whether it's about, you know, I really like this guy, as we were talking to him, it's fine. Right now, to Russell's point, we're relying on the project team, which is fine. You provide guidance. But our five commissioners don't have, I won't even. But our five commissioners don't have, I won't even say a macro view of some of this information. And they're kind of flying blind, and they are our interface to the project. So I hope you can understand where our concerns come from as a membership. When we're being talked about, we think we have the budget, we've got to move some here, we've got a little bit here. We've been asking for transparency for fifteen years. And again, we keep saying about all the past is in the past, but it keeps somehow getting dredged up. This is where our frustration is coming from, and as I mentioned once before, Russell and I spent an inordinate amount of time with Bob and Pete revamping the plans. Then we turn around and everything that we had discussed was kind of scrapped, and we were moving forward with a whole different schema. And at that point, all conversations ended. All right, fine, we were told point blank, it's a district project, okay? People on the television screen are not the district, the five of you are, or a combination of you that were involved in the project from the start. The fact that you don't have the answers, and we're referring to or deferring to the project team. Is where I have a big concern and a lack of confidence.
John, you had a question?
No.
Okay, Russell?
So there's a quote out there that, like, leadership is about responsibility, not making excuses. Political figure put it out there, I'll leave the political figure versus name out there, but that should be something that is a board, is a chief, I live by it, is a chief, he lived by it. Every, all the chiefs in the room, we all had to live. At the end of the day, you're the top of the food chain, you're responsible, okay? The lack of your business acumen, the lack of your transparency, your lack of incorporating the group that this building is for into the project. And the lack of you guys being on the same page. Doesn't give anybody any level of trust. That whether you as the five members of the board, in conjunction with a bunch of people up there on the TV screen. Will be able to successfully manage this project to get it with a positive outcome. Twenty years of history has indicated everything to the contrary. That it won't get done, it can't get done, it won't get right, and the five of you are not on the same page. One, one, and I'm just making a statement, you don't have to respond to it, but I do have one question.
Sure.
When you go to vote on whether or not you're going to award the bid in whatever fashion you are. Will there be a document that any of us can look at that proves that you have the money? That we can look at it and say, you said it, and here it is, and you're signing off on it, and this is your guarantee, is the four, the five members of the board. That this is why we are signing the contract, will we be able to see that before you sign that? Or is this gonna be a maybe, might be, or whatever?
Between now and Wednesday, I can't answer that, but I would guess.
So how are you gonna run a project?
Listen, I've not.
Can I support you there for a minute? He doesn't run the project.
Yeah, Bob shouldn't be talking.
I'm sorry, Bob, uh two members are walking out on on that question. So to answer, one second, Kelly, to answer Russell's question. We have until Wednesday to find out how we are appropriately able to move money around and um. What money we're allowed to use, we're talking to some financial, pardon me, financial uh experts, the bond, the auditors. Uh they will have a better insight, so if we talk to them between now and then, there's a possibility we might have a spreadsheet that says. This is how much we need, this is how much we have, this is where we're getting it from, we might be able to do that by Wednesday. It's kind of short notice to do that, I don't disagree that it would be nice to have. One thing that we haven't said in this meeting is that. That, uh I'm, maybe I alluded to it. At the end of this year, we will have another budget for next year. That budget will be submitted to the town, the town will collect the taxes, they will give it to us in the May timeframe of twenty twenty-five. So that's another influx of cash that we will be able to tap into, whether it's for turnout gear, trucks, house. Pagers, whatever it might be, it also may be uh in the budget, we may have a line item that says this is for uh expansion project. So we will have money from that source, we will have money potentially from the sale of the Center Street Firehouse. So we have multiple places where monies are going to be coming from. Plus, we will have the uh the auditor's statement saying that we have enough, or you need to take this much money from this account or that account. They they will be giving us some guidance, as Russell pointed out. With the exception of Charlie, none of us are financially brilliant, you know, we, we're not in the business. Um we have other things that we've been doing for our lives, and we're, you know, when you, when you go buy a car, for example. You don't have all the ins and outs of it, you have to take some, some amount of uh trust on the, the salesperson, or you talk to friends and things like that. But you don't talk to the engineers, the engineers built a building, they build a, they build a car, and you hope that they build it right. But you're not gonna go in and check that a bolt is grade eight or whatever, you're not gonna check if, if the clearance on the, on a main bearing is two thousands or twenty thousands. Um so we are, we are, may I just finish, please, just real quick? So what we are doing is we're putting our trust in the professionalism of professionals. And they have done this before, they continue to do it around the county, around the state, on the country. And they are working in our best interests, sure, they have a financial uh uh relationship to us, they are making money. Everybody does something for a job, for a living, to make money. So they are, they should not be exempted from the fact that they are allowed to make money on this project. So um I I just think that it's, it's a little bit premature to say that we're gonna be able to have a spreadsheet available, I'd like that, it would be great. I'd like to see it myself, I don't think I want to go much further than we are already without having. Grounded knowledge of where this money's coming from, it doesn't make sense to go out and and leap out there, but we have. We have money, the bond is going to bring in a lot of money, and between those two sources, we will be able to cover this. We just have to make sure that we're not taking money from, say, the, the turnout gear fund, or the, the apparatus fund, et cetera, funds that, the firefighter safety, whatever. Just make a a label for all things safety, whether it's gloves or masks or turnout gear, et cetera. All of these things we are not touching, I can guarantee you that, John, go right ahead.
My question is, so by Wednesday. Normally, assuming that council says you can build the second. Through the second phase altogether with the current bid as it is. Do we have the money, or we know by Wednesday that we have the money, or the bond or whatever, a couple of hard costs, I don't care about the soft costs.
Yes.
Cause I know we can.
Do you agree with that? Hard costs. By Wednesday, we should know if we're allowed to use the money in the way we think we can.
Yeah.
And the way they've mentioned, okay.
They had it tonight.
Yeah, so the answer is yes, if you're just talking about not, let's say, we're not.
About hard costs, actual physical construction to build both phases.
Right. And not.
By.
And not necessarily put the the fancy desk in, or the, the folding chairs, or whatever it might be. Right, that's.
Coming up, and that could be accounted for, soft up.
Yes.
Relatively speaking, can be accounted for next budget if needed, so.
Yes, did you have a comment?
Um, just to follow up clarification again, I apologize. Um so per what John is saying, I'm still just a little bit fuzzy as to. We are concretely, by the end of Wednesday, if we decide to sign a contract, we will be doing the first and second floor because we have the finances. If the council says yes, that is acceptable for us to move forward like that.
That's what our plan is, yes.
What would deter that plan?
The, the, the deterrent would be if we decide to go with the low bidder. Uh that, maybe you won't hear, um we had an option to go with the first floor, start the project. And then go out to bid for the second floor later, if we want to. But the, the idea is, if we, if we go out to bid for the second floor, in the process of the first floor being built up. We're thinking, we don't know for sure, that the people that are on site, that have already mustered, and that have already geared up to do the first floor. Will say, hey, I'm gonna bid that, I'm already there, I don't have to get guys, I don't have to get a uh uh construction trailer and all that stuff. So they will potentially be the bidders that we will want if we go that route. We could potentially go for one bid, first and second floor, but that's where the money gets kind of touched.
So we essentially, option A is the one you just described, option B is going with the second lowest bidder that is gonna do.
Potentially, we we would probably go out with another bid altogether for the second floor, we haven't quite come up with that, I don't think hard and fast yet. Our goal, anybody jump in if I'm wrong? My goal is to do the entire first and second floor, nonstop, from soup to nuts. And be able to move in on day one with all the equipment that we need to make it a, a fully functional firehouse. Maybe we won't have folding chairs upstairs in the big room, simple stuff, simple stuff.
Why, I'm completely with you, I just want to make last comment, obviously, I'm the youngest one in this room by a couple of years. Um, you know, Barry is referencing stuff in two thousand and two, and I was literally three years old. So I feel like I'm looking from a very different perspective than all the other firefighters in this room, but I just want to implore you guys, like. I'm completely on board with what Dwight is saying, move in ready, cancer safe ready.
Yep.
As someone who assumedly will be in the fire department, you know, for a longer, in this new firehouse for a longer period of time than the other firefighters in this room. Like, think of my generation, think about what we can do that will be best for us. I understand, we know, you know, I trust our project team, I know they have our best interest at heart. I'm also a little bit wary with what has been brought up about this low bidder contractor. And I know you guys have a job balancing membership, balancing the project team, but. I want to really make sure that we are setting this up for success one hundred percent from the beginning. That we don't have to be on top of this contractor, yes, I know he's a little bit cheaper, but. I would rather have somebody that we can leave alone and we can trust them to be doing their work and making this a good firehouse for the future, not somebody that we may be.
Something?
Yep, completely.
Now I'll let you continue, so Kevin's still here. If we hired ABC contractor versus NYZ contractor, A, X, Y, Z. Kevin's guy will be here no matter what, whether it's the low bidder currently, or it's somebody else. Kevin's guy is gonna be here, and that's Kevin's job, Kevin's guy's job.
I, I.
So I know, I, I'm just saying, I'm just getting it out there, that we're not hiring Kevin's guy because we have this particular contractor.
No, I.
He's gonna be here anyway, because of the, 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 the desire to not have these um things that might occur. Everybody requires a little bit of oversight, that's what the boss is called, everybody requires some level of oversight. So we will be having people on site, watching them in every aspect, in every phase, every day there's work going on.
And I do completely understand that, just putting it in a bit of a metaphor for me as a teacher.
Sure.
I would much rather, as a principal, hire a teacher that, yeah, I can pop into their room, and I know that when I'm not in their room, they're gonna be doing what they should.
Right.
Rather than hiring a teacher that if I, I know, oops, okay, it's twelve o'clock, gotta go in to make sure she's on sleep on break, type of thing. So again, just wanted to add, and I know I've spoken before, so a new voice, but a little bit of a different voice from what we've heard so far, but thank you, guys, thank the project team. Um and Kevin, thank you for taking some time off of your vacation to listen to all of us, so thank you, guys.
I'd like to offer, I'd like to offer one, one more thought with regard to that. The, the construction documents are more than a hundred and sixty pages of drawings, I think it's what it is, and something in the range of fourteen hundred pages of text. There's a lot here that's used to ensure that the contractor doesn't have wiggle room. And it gives Kevin the tool he needs to lean on them, and it gives Ken from our office the tool he needs to lean on them. To make sure they do the right job for you.
And I totally get that, I, I just think I'm not fully comprehending why. We wouldn't spend a little extra money for a completed project from the beginning with someone who we would potentially not have to have as much oversight on. And again, completely understand the contract side, this is just something that's been toying in my head that is not totally clicking.
From my perspective, and anybody jump in if I'm making a mistake here. If I go to a car dealer and I'm buying a brand X car, yellow, red, blue, whatever. And I go to another dealer and I buy the exact same car, but one is cheaper than the other. Is there a potential that that one is doing something a little less for that same car? For example, maybe he's not giving you fuel changes, or maybe he's not gonna uh give you a free can, a tank of gas or something. So we have to, we have to weigh what the cheap ball is doing. Is he giving us inferior materials? Probably not, because it's in the contract. But is he, is he spending less hours a week on the job? I don't know, maybe, maybe not. So we have to weigh what one guy gives us for his price versus what another guy gives us for a far lower price, in the tens of thousands of dollars less for the same job. So where is the cost being saved if he's giving you less for your money? And he's charging you a little less, will there be something that we have to fix on his side?
Yeah. You have to understand how the contractors come up with their bids. They, there's just a lot of guesswork on their part about how much am I gonna pay for this, and how much am I gonna pay for that? And, and as it turns out, the, so, so you never know that the guy who's a hundred thousand lower or higher than the other is better or worse. You only know that by you, how they respond to the conversations you have during construction, where you say. You, you know, you need to do it this way, not that way, and they say, okay, we understand, or if they try and sneak around and do it the wrong way. And that is where the person on the job from Triton, you know, is, is protecting you. The, the comment that was made about, a comment I made, which is that the, the lowest priced, the lowest bidder has this really superior mason working for him. I mean, there's a lot, you know, the building is really, in a large part, the brickwork. So I, it doesn't mean that the other guy doesn't have a decent mason. My only comment was, we have real experience with this one mason, and they do superior work, and that's all, that was it.
Okay, thank you, anybody else? Barry, last question?
That's what, and I'll be, try to be brief. Um the attitude that you might be able to get fair information, you possibly can get the information, it's just unacceptable, Dwight, it's absolutely unacceptable.
We will.
What you guys need to do, honestly, all of you, is watch yourself on a video, I think you'll be getting tremendous education. Your analogy with the cars is very simple, if I were to buy an expensive new car, I wouldn't call the engineers, but I would call every person I know that just bought that car. And I would also, the same applies to firehouse, how many firehouses have you visited that Bob Mitchell built? Any?
I didn't, but.
Yeah, pig skill.
There you go.
You did one, have you, how many other firehouses?
I'd say it's pig skill.
Just one firehouse you've visited? Have you visited Millwood or anybody else in the area?
I've been to Millwood, yeah.
So Barry, do you have any more? Because otherwise, we're gonna start winding this up, it's almost nine o'clock.
Nope.
Okay, John? Kaylee?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
You kept raising your hand, cause you're a teacher?
All right, so does anybody on the board have any comments, anything they want to bring up before we exit, or?
No. You just have, wait, you have one of them thinking down.
Okay, all right.
Otherwise.
Yeah, all right, so we have, uh, we have interviewed multiple candidates for treasurer. Um we had a firefighter uh in the department apply, we also had another lady apply, we've interviewed them both. I would like to hear a motion for the uh, for the treasurer that we.
Katie White?
Yeah, I couldn't think of her name, thank you, all right, so I need a motion for one of those two. We have interviewed them and we find them both to be superior. Uh we would like to uh hire one as soon as possible, as you can see, we have some financial stuff that we need to get into QuickBooks. So I need a, a motion, and a second, please.
I'll make the motion, do we appoint Katie White, treasurer of the fire district?
Okay, you have a second?
Oh, sir.
All right, do we have any discussion?
I'll second.
All right, thank you.
Well, I, I do have the other people that applied for the position been notified.
The.
That um, that they were interviewed well and were not selected, or have there been any conversation with those individuals?
I had a conversation with one that had interviewed, uh with, not with the individual themselves, but a family member. And they did not express interest in it at this time. Um I have one other lady that we interviewed, uh she has gotten too busy to work for us. So she's out of the picture, and there was another lady that basically uh didn't have enough time to work for us, so she's not really in the running. So there were four, we have these two candidates right now.
Do you have any guidelines of the state law, one city by, one city six, as far as.
No.
Taking the problem for residents?
Well, residents first, I mean, if they're not qualified, then you go ahead.
Okay. Um so anyway, okay, so any other?
Yes or no?
Not that I'm aware of, no. No, I actually asked, I think a lawyer, I asked, was it Mike? No, I, I'm sorry, I asked um uh the fire district lawyer, uh if there were any guidelines, um Joe Frank. And he said, not really, which I find amazing, honestly. There, uh Bob and Pete and Kevin and Reed, if you guys want to bail, this is not something that really involves the expansion project.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you so much, you have a good evening, guys.
Thank you. He confirmed me in five o'clock on Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
Five o'clock.
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, bye bye.
So you have a motion in a second, that was my question.
And on the, on the topic, if we have a discussion on it, we can discuss it at this point, so.
I, I just wanted to make sure that the other individuals were notified.
Well, there's two candidates.
Right.
Yes, and we're only gonna choose one, and then we can notify the one that didn't make it, okay? Alright, so uh, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, please say aye with a hand.
Aye.
Aye, aye, you understand, okay, you, did you raise your hand? Yes, yeah, okay. Alright, so if the motion passed four to one, I'm, yeah, the, the vote passes four to one. Okay, so um, now I guess we need a motion to adjourn?
No. Motion.
Motion, okay, who wants to second that?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, please say aye, aye, thank you, the meeting is adjourned.